The Personnel and Human Services Committee to order at 6:30 PM. I would like to read from the docket of March 5, 2019. We entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Donald J. Smith, 724 Oak Hill Avenue, Attleboro, to fill a three-year term on the Board of Assessors, term to expire February 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Before I call for a vote, I would like to invite Don to come up and just to meet with us for a few minutes. Counselor Reynolds and myself comprise two-thirds of the committee.
Okay.
And we thank you for your desire to serve on the Board of Assessors.
It's my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. I know some of you know you well, and some of us may not. And so if you would like to just say...
I'll give you the five-minute summary.
Thank you.
But my family and I moved here back in 1980. And my first job was as the Assistant City Planner for the city of Attleboro, making $13,500. And I was hired by Jerry Keen at the time. He was the mayor who appointed me. And I subsequently worked for Jerry, for Brenda Reed, and for Kai Sheng. And then shortly thereafter, that was about a five-year period, I became the Director of Planning and Land Use for the city. And my wife began to work at the Attleboro Public Library. She just recently retired as the Executive Director of the Attleboro Public Library. After I left the city, I went to work in private real estate development for a developer out of Boston. Went to work for another developer in Pawtucket, Rhode Island, and was self-employed for approximately 12 years in real estate development consulting, analyzing industrial, residential, and commercial properties for value and things like that. And then I left. I was building houses. I was doing a lot of different things. And I sort of got fed up with all of that. And I went to work for Bristol County Savings Bank. And I just retired in August of this year. And my job at the bank was to build all their new branches, negotiate all their real estate land deals and lease negotiations, do all the renovations. I'm a licensed contractor. But in the meantime, I've always been involved. Joan and I both have been involved heavily in the community. I was heavily involved, and I'm still involved, with Bristol Community College, getting the campus developed here. And I was past chairman of their Board of Trustees, and now I'm on their Foundation Board. And I also serve on the Board of Community Counseling of Bristol County, CCBC. And we have offices in Attleboro, Taunton, New Bedford, Fall River. And basically, we do mental health counseling and substance abuse counseling. So pretty big organization. We're doing a lot of good things in the area. And I'm on various different committees. I just left a New Hope committee. They're trying to do a fundraiser. So it's always been our philosophy in our family to stay involved in the community and to try to do the best you can to make it a better place to live. And our children grew up here. We have two children. And they both still live here in Attleboro. And we just believe in giving back. So I think it was a year ago, I ran into the mayor and I said, listen, if you're... It's been 10 years since I've been involved with being volunteer for the city. I read in the paper back with the Attleboro redevelopment authority. I was there for 18 years. So I left that maybe 10 years ago. And I saw the mayor and I said, hey, you know, if there's ever something you need me to help with, just let me know. And he gave me a call, so here I am.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
No, but if that's the short version, I can't imagine how long the long version could be because you have done like an enormous amount of things here in Attleboro, Don. And I welcome you to this position.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Me too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My board counselor.
Yes.
Sarah and I go way back to WARA.
You do? I mean, stop aging, Don.
Would the Board of Assessors have any new territory for you in your learning experience?
No, not really. I think from my viewpoint, you know, I was... I just wanted to be on the board and, you know, as we face a new high school and people are going to be asking questions about their tax bills, I think it's more important than ever that we have a fair and equitable process for the residents of Attleboro so that they understand how the process works, how fair it is, how people are treated equally, and there's no one being picked on. And so that would be my philosophy in approaching it. I don't, I know Lisa Nelson very well. I know Tony Gowan, who's been a long-term member pretty well. We go way back. So, you know, I'm a team player. And I just, I try not to have any hidden agendas. I'm sort of apolitical, believe it or not. And I just try to do what's best for the city.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
I say all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
The ayes have it.
Don, it'll be great having you.
Go home and rest. I hope you feel better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. That completes...
You have to say motion passes.
The motion passes. And I make a move, motion to adjourn the meeting at 6:30 PM.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye. I would like to call, that concludes the business of the Personnel and Human Services Committee. And we'll call for the next committee meeting at the next appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, call the council to order at 7:05, please stand and join me in a salute to our flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 15, 2019.
Second?
Thank you, motion is in order, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all, just a voice phone, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Also, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 5, 2019.
Second?
Thank you, motion is in order, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Moving right along to the public hearings.
Yes, we have a continued public hearing as it pertains to Beagle Club Road, and that continued public hearing is being continued to March 19, 2019.
Thank you. There are no new public hearings or joint public hearings this evening, we will move right along to the mayor's communication.
March 5, 2019, dear municipal councillors, respectfully submit a communication from Chief of Police Kyle P. Hegney regarding the receipt of a grant in the amount of approximately $7,948 via the FFY 2019 pedestrians/Bicycle Safety Enforcement Grant sponsored by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security-Highway Safety Division. There is no match required for this grant, in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to approve expending such funds in any future grant amendments by the Attleboro Police Department. Copies in your packets.
Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Fire Chief Scott Tila Chance regarding the receipt of a grant in the amount of approximately $50,000 through the Department of Fire Services. The funding shall be utilized in accordance with the legislative earmark as a health and wellness initiative for the Attleboro Fire Department. There is no match required for this grant. In accordance with Chapter 1, Section 12 of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to approve expending such funds in any future grant amendments by the Attleboro Fire Department. Copies in your packets.
Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Attleboro Public Schools Director of Finance, Mark Furtado, regarding fiscal year 2018 fiscal obligations that were not received in time to be processed in the normal fiscal year 2018 business cycle. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to authorize the school department to pay these previous year's school bills totaling $228.92 as identified in Mr. Furtado's communication. Copies in your packets.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from City Clerk Steve Withers regarding the need for funds to pay a water department employee to work during the rabies clinic at the water department. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $209.54 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Clerk Overtime. Upon approval, the available balance in the reserve fund for transfer will be $166,549.10. Copies in your packets.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Public Works Michael Tyler regarding the need for funds to purchase two walk-behind sidewalk sweepers. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $8,870 from account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to account Public Works Supplies Equipment. Copies in your packets.
Public Works Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Veterans Agent Ken Battature regarding the need for funds to replace two tires on the veterans' van. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $281.57 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Veterans Vehicle Maintenance. Upon approval, the available balance in reserve fund for transfer will be $166,267.53. Copies in your packets.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit for confirmation by your honorable body the appointment of Frank Cook, 32 Division Street, to fill an unexpired term on the Council of Aging Board of Directors, term to expire February 2023. Copies in your packets.
Please make sure Frank Cook comes before this honorable body and tells us his qualifications. Thank you, President, and I'll give a Human Services Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Superintendent of Park and Forestry Derek Corsi regarding the need for additional funds for overtime for the remainder of fiscal year 2019. The overtime account is almost depleted due to excessive amount of overtime callbacks in response to down trees. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $5,000 from Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Park and Forestry Overtime. Upon approval, the available balance in reserve fund for transfer will be $161,267.53. Copies in your packets.
Committee on Public Works, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Veterans Agent Ken Battature regarding the need for funds to bring the Vietnam Veterans Moving Wall to Attleboro. The caretakers of the moving wall have proposed September 26 through September 30, 2019, as the dates when the wall will visit Attleboro. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $6,000 from account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to account Continuing Appropriation Veterans Patriotic Events. Copies in your packets.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, please.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Recreation Dennis Walsh regarding the need for funds to demolish the William H. Liddell Memorial Pool in Bathhouse. The pool has structural issues beyond repair and must be taken offline. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body appropriate $24,310 from account Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to account Recreation Demolition Services. Copies in your packets.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, please.
We good?
Yeah, we're good. Budget and Appropriations Committee, I'm sorry.
I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Veteran Services Ken Battature regarding the donation of $100 in Market Back gift cards from Liuna Local 1144. In accordance with Section 1-12 of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, I hereby request your honorable body to accept these generous donations to the City of Attleboro. Copies in your packets. I respectfully submit a communication from Director of Planning and Development Gary Erasian regarding the need for additional funds for overtime for the remainder of fiscal year 2019. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body transfer $228 from account Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account Planning Overtime. Upon approval, the available balance in reserve fund for transfer will be $161,039.53. Copies in your packets.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, please.
The City of Attleboro has been notified of its fiscal year 2020 apportionment of the Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid in the amount of $1,213,763. Therefore, I hereby request your honorable body to appropriate $1,213,763 in any other future grant amendments into Fund 3108, Chapter 90 Projects, for the purpose of funding Chapter 90 Eligible Projects as approved by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation or MASH DOT. Copies in your packets.
Budget and Appropriations Committee, please.
Sincerely, Paul Haru, Mayor.
Just hold on right there, I feel like that one in the past has either gone to Transportation and Traffic or to you, Council Jackson. I have here budget, but I don't know what I was thinking at the time.
You actually have me?
Yeah, Public Works Committee on that last one, Public Works on the last one?
Yeah, we had it at Traffic and Turn 30.
I know, I don't know what I was thinking. Thank you. Other communications?
Okay, we have a few. First is a communication dated February 22, 2019, from the Attleboro Inspection Office citing Joseph Roggerio of Rhode Island for parking storage of unregistered vehicles at 561 Washington Street for off-site sales.
License Committee, please.
We received an application for Hawkers and Peddlers license from Renee Lum of 62 Sycamore Ave, Attleboro, to sell food and beverages and novelties.
License Committee, please.
Received a communication from the Department of Agricultural Resources advising of a public hearing on April 4, 2019, at the Attleboro Parks and Forestry Administration Office at 199 Comte Street, Attleboro, to receive public comment for the proposed vegetation management plan submitted by the city.
That's NFYI to all councillors?
Okay. And we also received a communication from the Attleboro Historical Commission requesting use of the city council chambers on May 13, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. for the annual historic preservation awards ceremony.
That's NFYI, and I'll communicate that to the whole. Thank you. Committee at the whole, at this time, I would entertain a motion to enter committee at the whole. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passed. Motion passes. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council on any matter of city business? Francis Balut.
My name is Francis Balut, and I live at 120 Carrier Avenue in South Attleboro. I'd like to ask first President Cooper if anyone here has heard of the Nutrition Action Health Newsletter. It's sort of like a consumer report, and that it answers to no corporations. It does its own testing individually. And this is a three-page article on marijuana in general that I've edited substantially that I think would be in the best interest of councillors present. So, may I continue?
Sure.
Thank you. And because it is a magazine that has publishing rights, I'm only able to read it, and if somebody wants to look at it after a meeting is, is fine, but I'm not able to make copies and distribute it. What this is, is indicating that marijuana, as we all know, has gone mainstream. And this is for the general public who might be watching here tonight as well, because I would like this information to go to all of the residents of Attleboro. They're my concern. It says, "The plant sister hemp, H-E-M-P, and their constituents now show up in oils, creams, candies, and more." This is what it does for or to your health. Now cannabis refers to marijuana and hemp. It's a blanket term. Also means hemp oil, topical creams, CBD products, high THC concentrates that are smoked, vaporized, or orally ingested, and more. Maybe cannabis will be useful to some people, but it will be disappointing to most. Remember, they're doing their own testing. No influence by cannabis or anyone else. Here are 10 things that you should know about cannabis. Don't confuse the THC with CBD. Cannabis plants contain a class of compounds called cannabinoids, and we've identified just over 100 of them. The two most abundant, THC and the CBD. The THC drives the hallmark features of feeling high, like getting the munchies and feeling relaxed, as well as the negative side effects, like feeling paranoid or anxious. In recent years, the marijuana's potency has soared. In 1980, marijuana averaged about 1% THC. In a recent report, marijuana sold at dispensaries averaging 21%, according to the labels. CBD can produce drug effects, but it's not the typical marijuana high. It's not intoxicating, and it doesn't come with the THC-like side effects. Hemp oil doesn't have much CBD unless it's added, because CBD is found only in hemp leaves and flowers, not at seeds.
Francis.
So if you want CBD, which is more like the medical information, it says, "Look at the label." And you need to see the letters.
Francis, so I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I really want to know. I appreciate your, your education, but I really want to know what and how this is a matter of city business. That's what you're here to address the council on, any matter of city business. And so I, I want to hear that from you. Otherwise, I'm going to have to continue to cut your narrative short.
And at this, this last area, which indicates edibles, and it refers to like the two high school girls that within the last six months or so actually had reported to the nurse at school that they were not feeling well. And this is why, with cookies that they eat. It does say, "The edibles are problematic. Easy to eat a cookie without knowing what's in it, and many edibles have much more than five to 10 MGs of THC." It says, "Keep your edibles away from children." When you inhale cannabis, you feel the effects almost immediately, but it can take 30 to 90 minutes to feel the effects of edibles.
Francis, enough. I want to know from you specifically what matter of city business you're bringing before the council. For you to stand there and read that is not helpful to anyone.
This is what matters. There are family members here who do have children and possibly could get into the stash, and they would be eating these edibles, because it says, "The edibles take 30 to 90 minutes"
Point of order.
"to feel the effects of marijuana." So they keep eating more.
Francis, hang on. I asked for a point of order, so when I ask you, you need to pause for a moment. So I think what would be helpful, I did try to have a conversation with Mr. Balut prior to the meeting, that I think the emphasis needs to be on new city business or, you know, business that's important to the city, not any kind of business.
Sure.
So that, that's number one. Number two, unfortunately, Francis, we know that you have a very strong opinion with regards to marijuana, medical, adult use, all of those kinds of things. But it is an ordinance that has been passed in our community. And if you would like to have a conversation about, we, the state of Massachusetts does not allow us to not have an ordinance allowing the dispensaries or the cultivation centers here. So I, I understand your opposition to it, but unfortunately, we're not allowed to have that.
I'm not asking you to create any, the particular ordinance.
Shutting you both off.
Fine.
But I'm just disappointed.
Francis, stop for a moment. Stop for a moment. Stop for a moment. The, I understand your point of order, and I, and I'm going to help you make the connection.
Thank you.
What I think you're trying to communicate to the council is that, from your perspective, there might be a gap in the existing ordinance around edibles. I don't know that I agree with your position on that, but I think that that's what you're trying to convey through the findings that you're reading and, and your overall concern for the community on edibles and the way that they're sort of, by what you've stated, easily infused into, into cookies and brownies and all those types of things. And I think I'm appreciative of that, but again, I want to get back to the city business piece. What, how, how do you connect that to something relevant to city business and not just reading a synopsis article that, that we received in the, in the mail?
Rather than just think of, uh, companies that want to promote and sell marijuana and all of the other products and things that go along with it in their industrial zones and not in business zones, I'd like them to understand that this here magazine is saying that labeling's are, can be very wrong. One state to another can authorize different amounts of marijuana to be considered legal at any one time. It's, uh, it's just something that I feel that the overall public, as many residents of Attleboro could be aware of this. In fact, probably the bottom line is, I'll say that this nutrition action is a March 2019 issue.
Thank you.
And if, if they wanted to see all of the, the information that's in here, I, I think they would be surprised.
Thank you, Francis. Any questions for Mr. Balut at this time? No. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me the time that you have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to, that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to arou-
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We are on to committee reports. I'm sorry, I have to turn back the page. And we will start with Council Jackson.
Thank you. Reporting for Public Works Committee on the docket of March 5, 2019, I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $10,530 from account 1000-359000, Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to account 16501000-524230, Park and Forestry Vehicle Maintenance relative to the need for funds to replace the dump body on the Park and Forestry Department's 2003 Ford 450 Dump Truck.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Council Jackson.
Thank you. First of all, Council Perica, I appreciate you handling my committee meeting last week for me. I do appreciate that. Yes. So Derek Corsi, who is our Superintendent of Park and Forestry, had actually gone out and sought out several different, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Quotes.
Yeah, quotes. Thank you very much. I just drew a blank for a second. Thank you very much. To have, you know, to see if he was going to have this whole truck replaced, but he come to find out, it's basically just the dump body that needs to be replaced. So, and what they did was, instead of, it was always a hydraulic system. Now it's going to be electronic system. So they went and got, they're getting a, an electronic cord for the plow that's going to go on the front of the truck to, they're getting that from Public Works, actually. The, the two departments are working together to put this all together, so it's going to become electronic rather than hydraulic. So that's good. So we're saving some money. We're not going out and buying another new fancy truck.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none of Council Delicio.
Um, just a comment about the funding. So as I know, he said this last week, but I am growing, increasingly concerned about purchases coming from Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash. Between the last communication and this communication, we're looking at $59,210 out of free cash, which could really impact our credit rating, which at this time in the city's history is probably more important than it has been with the school coming down, with other purchases that we have. I'm supporting the business because it's something that we need, but this is something that I'm going to continue to pursue and look into because, you know, we've got some spending coming down, and I really think we need, just because we have it, doesn't mean we should spend it. So that's my soapbox on that.
Council Conti.
Mr. President, does the chairman of the Budget and Administration know what the current balance for the Undesignated Fund is?
Through the chair to Mr. Conti. I don't, but especially where I have several pieces of business of which, I will have that for our committee meeting next week.
I, if I may, I have it, if you'd like to.
So in the past, Mr. President, the councils were provided with a remaining balance, and each motion that came down to the council on Undesignated Fund Expenditures.
What we got from Deb Gould was a breakdown of all the existing previous votes and votes that were pending. We all got it by, by email. I don't remember, just mostly recently, I don't remember what the balance was, but I remember looking at it.
Yep. Well, I'm referring to something else. In the past administration, whenever the mayor sent down a request for an expenditure out of the Undesignated Fund Balance, he mentioned at the end of his recommendation to the council what the remaining balance in the fund would be if the measure was approved.
Didn't they do that?
We do that with Reserve Fund for, Reserve Fund for Transfer, not Free Cash.
Yeah, I, I don't remember that on Free Cash. I only remember getting the results from, from Deb last week or so.
I saw the, I saw Deb's memo last week.
And she detailed out the date, the votes, the amount, anything that was currently pending before the council. But again, I don't remember what that amount was. So any other questions or comments? Council Perica.
I, I do have that, that email. If you would like me to share that with him now on the floor, if you want to.
I have the email as well.
Just that, if the comment came up, the available balance as of February 19 was $1,749,552.62, but that doesn't take into consideration what we've taken over the last couple of days. In addition to that, water retained earnings with the available free cash of $719,863.30, and wastewater is $1,214,849. That's what, yes, so that was certified, and that's what the mail was currently.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Council Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Perica?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. I move to approve the request of the mayor to appropriate $13,500 from account 1000-359000, Undesignated Fund Balance Free Cash General Government to account 11241000-524011, Citywide Maintenance of Buildings Relative to the Repair of the Roof on the Secondary Storage Garage at Highland Country Club.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Council Jackson.
Again, it's coming out of Free Cash. Yes. So the mayor has allowed Park and Forestry to obtain two of the buildings to utilize them for their fertilizer, some of their trucks, some of their lawn mowers, because they've all been left out over the years, just left outside. And of course, if you leave something outside, it gets, you know, ruined very, very quickly as opposed to being kept undercover throughout the winter months and things like that. So they've been using those buildings, but this one particular one, building, desperately needs a roof if we're going to continue to utilize that for Parks and Forestry, which they do need some type of a maintenance building. We all knew that anyways, that their other one was, you know, hot mess, so.
Thank you. Any other?
Thank you. So as a, as a result of bringing your business out to our committee last week, there was a significant amount of discussion with regards to Highland Country Club. And you're right, when we leave pieces of equipment outside, dump truck bodies, you know, like we just approved, you know, $10,530 because the body, you know, is rotted away because it's been sitting outside. There was a request for a little bit more information for the garage. So I went out there, I met Derek, I took a picture and shared that with everyone so everyone can see the level of disrepair in there. And again, you know, it's coming out of, you know, Free Cash General Government, and I think again, as part of our conversation from last week, it's sponsored new business that people will hear about later on tonight. But I will support this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Council Cooper, and I'm not sure this is really where it belongs, but, um, so I'm just going to kind of piggyback on what Council Conti said. And I do know that Mayor Doom is used to do it for the Reserve Fund for Transfer. I, I think that might be what Council Conti is talking about. Would it be an issue for us to ask that it be done for the Undesignated Fund too? We could do that. We could ask that we, would, could I ask that, that council?
I meet with the mayor generally every Tuesday, but I didn't get to him this week because I had a work commitment, but I can-
I think it makes some sense, and we would then, right away, know how much money is coming out, and, and I just think it would be helpful. I think it's a good idea. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds so much better when you say it.
It does.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I just have one more.
Yeah, sure. Council Jackson.
And I know that, you know, there's, there's a couple of other buildings over there that, that the city is utilizing through other departments. And I also know that the, the main building that people are talking about getting up and running and things, that is in complete disrepair. So I hope that never comes before us as far as a, the mayor never asks us for any money to fix that roof or anything on that big building. That's my biggest hope of all, because that's going to be like a pit.
It's coming.
Yeah. So I was afraid of. Okay, that's my, concludes my comments. Thank you.
Hearing none. This also requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Council Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Perica?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. I have no further business this evening for the Public Works Committee, but I would like to call for a meeting at the appropriate time next week. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counsel Waterman.
Yes. From the docket of March 5th, 2019, I would like to entertain a motion to confirm the following reappointments to positions and for terms as indicated. Kathleen Park to the Alabro Housing Authority, five-year term, February 2024 expiration. Tony Viveros to the Board of Park Commissioners, five years, expires February 2024. Terrence McCrossen, Constable, one year, February 2020. Tony Viveros, Constable, one year, February 2020. Cynthia Van Vors, Counsel on Disabilities, three years, February 2022. Rosa Lopes, Cultural Counsel, three years, February 2022. Darrell Velez, Cultural Counsel, three years, February 2022. And Tony Viveros, Licensing Board, six years, February 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion's in order. Any other comments or questions? No. Any questions from the council? Hearing none. This requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
And it would also entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Donald J. Smith, 724 Oak Hill Avenue, Alabro, to fill a three-year term on the Board of Assessors, term to expire February 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. This also requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Following from the docket of February 19th, 2019, I move to confirm the following reappointments to positions and for terms as indicated. Victor Bonneville, the Board of Library Trustees, three years, February 2022 expiration. Diane Mangiarati, Board of Library Trustees, three years, February 2022. May Gowan, Board of Police Commissioners, three years, February 2022. Dermann Larkin, Board of Recreation Commissioners, three years, February 2022. Bruce Sagler, Board of Recreation Commissioners, three years, February 2022. Charles Oliver, Board of Trust Fund Commissioners, three years, February 2022. Melissa Riley, Conservation Commission, three years, February 2022. Kathy Greepi?
Garbey.
Garbey, excuse me. Conservation Commission, three years, February 2022. Ian Daley, Constable, one year, February 2020. Joseph Ferros, Counsel on Aging, four years, February 2023. David Larson, Counsel on Aging, four years, February 2023. Kevin Lacoste, Counsel on Disabilities, three years, February 2022. Wendy Foster, Counsel on Human Rights, three years, February 2022. Lori Sawyer, Counsel on Human Rights, three years, February 2022. Jeffrey Bratberg, Counsel on Substance Abuse Prevention, three years, February 2022. Sean Quigley, Cultural Counsel, three years, February 2022. Paul D'Nisi, Personnel Board, three years, February 2022. Benton Keane, Redevelopment Authority, five years, February 2024. Richard Oliver, Solid Waste Advisory Committee, three years, February 2022. Walter Rares, Traffic Study Commission, three years, February 2022. Joseph Caponegro, Traffic Study Commission, three years, February 2022. Phil Odette, Veterans Grave Officer, one year, February 2020. And Catherine Rochenstrat, Zoning Board of Appeals Associate, two years, February 2021.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments?
I, I would only say that everybody here and prior to what I read back a few minutes ago are just absolutely excited to rejoin working with the city.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This also requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
And the next motion I'll read, Jaber.
Sure. Yeah, so.
I, I move to confirm the reappointment of Edward Pariqa to the Municipal Building Commission for a term of three years, term to expire February 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments?
I, I spoke to Ed last week, and he is, he wasn't able to meet with us here, but he really desires to continue to serve.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. A voice vote is required. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Eight, zero, and Counsel Pariqa abstained from the vote.
Okay. I move to confirm the appointment of Stanley Esti, 12 Ashford Lane, to fill an expired term on the Council of Human Rights, term to expire February 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Counsel, hearing none. A voice vote is required. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
And I move to confirm the appointment of Rachel Legend for Fuller Hospital, 200 May Street, to fill an expired term as a community organization on the Council on Substance Abuse Prevention, term to expire February 2020.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any questions or comments?
Rachel was unable to be here last week. I did speak to her on the phone about 10 days ago, and she is the CEO at Fuller Hospital. She would like to represent Fuller Hospital as an organization on, on this council.
Great. Counsel Holmes?
Thank you. I'm really happy this is happening because we had members of the community on, on the Council of Substance Abuse Prevention, but there are supposed to be, I think, like three organizations. Like, it sounds like it's coming together a little bit more. So I like that because this is the first time I'm seeing the community organization be filled, so that's a good sign.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This also requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
I entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Sandy Verrier?
Verrier.
Verrier, excuse me. 353 Tiffany Street, to fill an expired term on the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire February 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Great. So I don't know, I just have a quick comment I'm going to make anyway. I, I know most of us know Keith Hutchins passed away and was the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a long time. And I don't know who's going to sit in this seat for the Zoning Board of Appeals, but you have to do what Keith used to do and leave me little notes. So this was from Keith when the gavel got stolen. And I thought, how appropriate, given that we're bringing out a... Sandy's been on the Board, Zoning Board of Appeals for a long time, but, you know, this is what I used to get from Keith, so I have high expectation from the new person to leave me little notes and I would write, write back. So I'm leaving that in there. And thank you for letting me, you know, say some kind of things, but Sandy's great and I hope to get some notes from whoever is the Chair of the Zoning Board like Keith used to do. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
I entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Sean McNamara, 83 Ritchie Road, to fill an unexpired term on the Planning Board, term to expire February 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments or questions from the councils? Seeing none. This requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
I entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Sherri Miller-Badot, 631 Park Street, to fill an unexpired term on the Council on Substance Abuse Prevention, term to expire February 2022.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Questions or comments? Hearing none. This also requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
And finally, I entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Thomas Lee, 1195 Oak Hill Avenue, to fill an unexpired term on the Conservation Commission, term to expire February 2020.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
That's all the business that the Personnel and Human Services Committee has this evening, and we would like to meet again at the next appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two things before the council this evening from the docket of reporting for the Capital Improvements and City Development Committee. Let's get that straight. From the docket of March 5th, 2019, I move to approve the request of the mayor to grant permission to expand the use of the funds in Fund 3546 Lottery Project to a space needs analysis.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Counsel Conti.
Yes, Mr. President. The council, several months ago, appropriated $125,000 for the library to do a evaluation of the envelope so that we could get a general idea of what the expense is going to be. The initial reports came back at $8 million. The library, built in 1907, has come to a point where virtually all elements of the exterior are in jeopardy of failure, with the exception of the rock that it's built out of. The interior has additional drawbacks which don't meet the current needs of the library. The library, if you've been paying attention to the circulas coming out monthly, has a very active children's program, children's reading program, and other activities, which it's a very active, active group. But the 1907 building that's on North Main Street is, in all people's opinions, one of the crown jewels of the city of Attleboro. It is a very important piece of architecture that has been a very formative part of the history of the city of Attleboro. And I don't think anyone wants to see that building go away. So during a municipal building commission discussion, one of the building commissioners said, "If we're going to spend $8 million on renovating just the exterior of the library, it'd be left with a 1907 interior of the library, much of which we cannot use. Wouldn't we be better off building a new library that meets the needs of the Board of Trustees of the library and the public?" The idea caught on quickly in the Municipal Building Commission, and they petitioned to ask the chairman to speak with the mayor to determine whether or not they were going to be heard. And the mayor heard the building commissioner and said, "We need to present this idea to the Library Board of Trustees," which he did. And the Library Board of Trustees was very receptive to the idea that maybe the needs of the public of the city of Attleboro would be better met with a new library rather than expending what looks to be well past $10 million in renovating the existing library. So we did not use all of the $125,000 that we appropriated as a council. In fact, we didn't even use half of the money to get to this point. So what the mayor is asking is, can we have some funds from what's left over in that fund, not to exceed what's in that fund, to hire a professional organization, to interview the Board of Library Trustees, to review the library programs, both in Attleboro and in other communities, to determine what is the building that would be the best building for the library going forward? Whether or not extensive interior renovations would be needed, would need to be done to meet those needs? Or would it be best or more economical to the public to fund the building of a new public library? So the building commission thinks this is a good idea. The mayor thinks this is a good idea. The Library Board of Trustees thinks this is a good idea. I think this is a good idea, and I would urge my councils to support the measure. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Vice President Pariqa.
Thank you, President Cooper. Through the president to Counselor Conti. Thank you for that very thorough explanation. There's been, this has been one of the hot topics in the city this week. It is a space and use study where any... That, the information that'll come back is how do you build a 21st century? Do we need to build a 21st century library? Do we need less storage? Do we need more room for programming? And what the potential would be in the event that we did, did build a new library? What a proper and appropriate use for the old building would be? So I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of good and useful information that can come out of this study. It doesn't mean that we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater on the current building, but it helps us and it helps the administration and it helps the library make a, an appropriate decision on how to move forward. I strongly remember our sticker shock when we were presented with that information, that we need $8 million worth of repairs. And I think it's important to the residents and to all of us to know that we are making the appropriate financial choice and what is collaboratively, what is needed and the best needs moving forward for the city of Attleboro. So I very much support this and I look forward to the results of this space and use study.
If I could comment on Counsel Pariqa's comments. It's important to know that the space needs analysis includes what the space needs would be in the existing library. That's very important that that gets across clear. That when you look at, what do you need to do your job in 2019 as a public library? That includes, what do you need to do it in the building that you're in? I sent an email today to the chairman of the Municipal Building Commission asking him whether or not there was a deed restriction on the building. When it was donated to the city in 1907 for the purpose of constructing a library, it's very possible that the use of that land is restricted to the use as a library. If that's the case, our hands are tied and we don't really have much choice. I also want to comment on that the $8 million that you mentioned is a figure that no one involved in this discussion believes is anywhere near reality.
Agreed.
Already, they're looking at the figures that were presented in the last study and saying, 10 million isn't enough. And that's not talking about what's going on inside the building.
Correct.
So, thank you for your comments. I think it's, you know, I said in the last meeting, "Don't panic." And instantly, everybody panicked. The library is very important to everybody. It's a very, very important institution. I use it. I use it in my job because I can get resources through the library I cannot get through my employer. I just did it last week on pivot tables for Excel. It's only available on the internet through the library. It's the only way I can get the book, the textbook. It's a different world. And that means there's different space needs. And it's about time that we look at them, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I just have a, a quick thing, Rick. Do you remember what the threshold for ADA compliance is? Remember when we did the school?
It is 50% of the value of the building. The building is currently assessed, I believe, at $3 million. And we're way over that. So it's going to have to be 100% ADA compliant.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and I believe with Counsel Jackson.
Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and I believe with Congressman Jackson. Yep?
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Preger?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, fellow councillors. From the docket of March 5, 2019, I wish the public, the Capital Improvements and City Development Committee wishes to call for a public hearing on the Capital Improvement Plan 2020-2025 to be held on March 12, 2019.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to call for a public hearing to get the ball rolling, even though the books is not going to be delivered until April 1st or April whatever. I have already scheduled a water department tour for March 23 at 9:00 in the morning, where the public can meet with the councillors at the front door of the water building at, I think it's 1217 West Street. I've scheduled a wastewater tour for councillors and the public for March 30, 2019, at 9:00 in the morning. That's a Saturday. We will meet at the front door of the wastewater building at, I think it's 97 Pond Street North, to look at the wastewater capital improvements. And I've scheduled a public meeting for the Recreation Department for April 13 at 9:00 in the morning, for councillors and the public to meet at the BarTech Center at 9:00 in the morning. I expect that because the Recreation Department has 26 or 29 projects in this year's Capital Improvement Plan, it is the single largest department and the most widespread department, that tour is likely to go beyond noon time. And that's the same date that we have a beautify, beautify Attleboro. So I'm sorry to take you away from that, but the Recreation Department Capital Improvement Plan is so exhaustive, I really would encourage you to see what's going on. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. So we will be having a special meeting on the night of the 12th for the purposes of Council Conti, to call for that public hearing based on some information we received in discussion with the, the city solicitor regarding testimony before public hearings and that kind of thing. So Council Conti is going to call for that. We won't have the plan yet, but then we can proceed with the, with the view, review of the facilities that he had previously scheduled. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Rick.
And that concludes the business the Capital Improvement City Development Committee has to bring before the council this evening.
We'll do one more thing. We've got to vote.
Oh, we do have to vote.
For the public hearing. This requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Give me a second, too.
Heather did the second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the business the Capital Improvements and City Development Committee has to bring before the council this evening. We look forward to the meeting on March 12.
No, we'll just go to you.
Reporting for zoning and
We'll just do that when we get to you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Reporting for Transportation and Traffic Committee, I have three motions this evening from the docket of November 6, 2018. I move to strike the following communication. A communication dated October 5, 2018, from resident Leo Johnson, expressing concerns about no trucks signs on Tiffany Street and the heavy truck traffic building up in County Square.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments?
Just, I voted, all of these motions I voted out a while ago. I, just with the different meetings that we've had, I wasn't able to take action on them. As many of you remember, we now allow through trucking on Tiffany Street from, up into the business park there, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This is a voice vote required. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. From the docket of November 6, 2018, I move to strike the following communication. A communication dated October 16, 2018, from the Transportation and Traffic Committee regarding the AHS roadway enabling project.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order.
We've already approved this piece of business, so I'm just cleaning it out of committee.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. A voice vote is required. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of June 5, 2018, I move to strike the following communication, that this honorable body work in conjunction with the Traffic Study Commission, the police chief, the superintendent of schools, the VPW director, the principal of Willett Elementary School, and the residents of the neighborhood to address a well-documented traffic concerns in and around Willett Elementary School, including but not limited to speed limit and creating a safe environment for pickup and drop-off of students in this area, and to refer that the above, to refer the above matters to the Traffic Study Commission for study and recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order, Vice President.
So when I first, when I voted this out of committee, I gave you an update on how well things were going over there. Over February break, the president, the president, the principal of the high school, myself, and some of the PTO members got together and had conversation about what other people's impressions of it were and how they can continue to make things better. Again, it's running quite smoothly. We have a couple of rogue parents that don't want to be told what to do. However, you know, everything else has been just tremendous. So we can take that also off my record.
Any other questions or comments? Council on?
I'm just going to ditto that. I'm in that line quite often, I want you to know. And it is moved, moving along. It's incredible how much better it is. And they keep adding new things that make it move along even faster and keep the kids warm inside. I mean, it's real. I'm dying to see, though, what, my comment would be is, I want to know what they're going to do in the warm weather, if parents want to drop kids off early, you know, like you used to, and be able to let them run around 15 minutes or 10 minutes before. You don't have to answer that. I'm just, you can.
Sure.
So it is, the principal is speaking to his staff to see if there are people that would be available to allow for that. Right now, they're very limited as to their contract hours, on what time they're supposed to be there and not be there, and what time they have to go, and, excuse me. So they are, that is something that they're very cognizant of. And the other part of it, too, is that, you know, there are parents who are like, "We're missing out on the interaction with other moms and things like that that are happening." So they're making suggestions and recommendations on, you know, go, go to the Dunkin' Donuts around the corner and do that.
That's what I say. Go there before you get to the school.
So, but they are, that is something they're very cognizant of, and they're working on getting that sorted out. So you'll be able to do that when the spring comes.
It's working great. I think it's, it's perfect. And it's much safer, quite frankly.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Makes me very happy.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This also requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes.
Thank you. Finally, I just, I thought I would let you know, we do have a Traffic Study Commission meeting this Thursday in our back room over here at 6:00 PM. The chairperson is away. We don't have a whole lot on the docket, but we'll do our best. Hopefully, we'll be able to have a quorum. And I would expect that next week I will also make an announcement that there'll be a special meeting next Thursday. But for now, that concludes the business for Transportation and Traffic, and I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reporting for Budget and Appropriations, I have no business tonight. However, I may have a guest or two next week. I'll let you know by Thursday.
Great, thank you.
But I would like to call for a meeting next week at the appropriate time.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Reporting for Licenses Committee from the docket of, I have one motion this evening from the docket of February 19, 2019. I move to approve the application for scrap metal recycler junk dealer from Prolarized New England Company LLC DBA Schnitzer Northeast at 136 Bacon Street, Attleboro.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments?
No questions, no comments. We talked about this at committee.
We did. This requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, yeah.
That's all the business I have for License Committee this evening, and I'd like to call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Great, thank you. Council Reynolds, on your motions, you can wave.
Thank you. I was, I was going to ask you that. Thank you, President Cooper. Reporting for City Property and Claims Committee from the docket of March 5, 2019, I move to approve the request of the mayor to declare the following school department items as surplus and available for disposition. One CD player, one receiver, one cassette deck, and one turntable, and they are all outdated.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any other comments or questions?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Thank you. Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Councilor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Preger?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move to approve the request of the mayor to declare the following police procurement items as surplus and available for disposition. I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8 fajitsu stylists. They are all in poor condition.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments or?
Very self-explanatory.
Excellent. This also requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Councilor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus? I'm sorry. Vice President Preger?
Yes.
And Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of February 19, 2019, I move to approve the request of the mayor to accept the donation of $50 in Stop &amp; Shop gift cards from Howard Walls to the Veterans Department.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments or questions?
I have none.
Thank you. Hearing none. This requires a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Eight to zero.
Also from the docket of February 19, 2019, I move to approve the request of the mayor in accordance to Section 5-8 lease, lease purchase agreement of the revised ordinance of the city of Attleboro to approve a 42-month lease agreement with Conica Minolta for the leasing of 12 copias to be used at the Attleboro High School.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order.
No, I do not.
Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Councilor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Preger?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move to approve the request of the mayor to declare the following water department items as surplus and available for disposition. Four fire hydrants damaged, two underwater meters used, and one Craftsman lawn mower. They are in condition.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments or questions?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Councilor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Preger?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move to approve the request of the mayor to declare the following park and forestry department items as surplus and available for trade-in or resale value and available for disposition. I have four mowers, one snow blower, two tractors, one rototiller, two lawn blowers, one Eagle trailer, and they are in all poor or very poor condition.
Second.
Or junk.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Councilor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Preger?
Yes.
Conti?
Yes.
Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And that is all the business City Property and Claims has this evening that I would like to call on committee media at the next appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm going to do, I'm going to do my own committee first. So, reporting for Ordinance Election Legislative Matters Committee from the docket of March 5, 2019, I move to approve the following charter amendment. Special legislation language to amend the charter. Motion to petition the General Court to enact the following legislation to amend the Attleboro, sorry, Attleboro City Charter, replacing any gender-specific wording with gender-neutral wording, specifically deleting the word councilman and inserting in its place the word counselor, deleting the word committee man and inserting in its place the word committee member, replacing the word him with the words him/her, and the word his with the words his/her wherever they appear, provided that the legislator may reasonably vary from form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of petition. An act to amend the Attleboro City Charter, making all gender references there and gender-neutral. Being enacted by a state and House of Representatives and General Court assembled and by the authority of the same, of the same as follows. Section 1. The Attleboro City Charter is hereby amended by replacing any gender-specific wording with gender-neutral wording, specifically deleting the word councilman and inserting in its place counselor, deleting the word committee man and inserting in its place committee member, and replacing the word him with the words him/her, and the word his with the word, words his/her whenever they appear. Section 2. This act shall take effect upon its passage by the General Court.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any comments?
Thank you. We did discuss this in committee. It, it just needs to happen. This is what makes sense moving forward.
Any other questions or comments?
That would be great if everybody could support this. I would really appreciate it. This is my business initially, and I, I hope I have everybody's support here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Councilor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Preger?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of February 19, 2019, I move to approve the mayor's request for the following on special legislation language term, mayor term limits. Motion to petition the General Court to enact the following legislation to amend Attleboro City Charter by amending Section 3-1 of the Attleboro City Charter election term compensation, provided that the legislator may reasonably vary form, substance, requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition. An act to amend Section 3-1 elections term compensation. Being acted that the state and House of Representatives and the General Court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1. Section 3-1 of the Attleboro City Charter is hereby amending by inserting the following language after the first sentence in of Section 3-1. No mayor shall serve more than eight years as the mayor of Attleboro, within the sole exception of the city, the city councillor who became mayor to finish an unexpired term of the previous mayor. No mayor shall be elected more than four two-year terms. Section 2. This act shall take effect upon its passage by the General Court.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments or questions?
I do. I, I said quite a bit last week, and I just, I'm concerned that there's not an understanding. So I wanted to read something, and I did provide everybody with Mass. General Law 43, 43B, Section 10. So the charter, the charter, only a charter commission elected under this chapter may propose any changes in a charter relating to any way to the composition, mode of election, appointment, or term of office by the legislative body, the mayor, the city manager, or the board of selectmen or town manager. This is the law. The law says that you cannot change a charter going about it this way. So I would encourage the administration, if this is something that they feel they really want to do, there must be a charter commission. So I would encourage you to not support this, because this isn't the right way to go about this. And that concludes my comments.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and the vote will begin with, did you have a question?
Just, sorry, just as a piece of clarity, so if you support putting this forward to the legislature, the vote is, would be yes. If you don't, then it would be a no vote. I'm just making sure that I'm clear on that.
Yes, you are, Crystal.
Well, me and people at home.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing, Council Waterman? So my understanding is this is about procedure of where this goes, to the charter commission? Well, we're really talking to the General Court or not? No, this is, so, this is to, either we're giving it a thumbs up that we want this to go, to be voted on by the legislature, or we do not. Correct. There is no charter commission to, to take on this work at this time. Any other? Council Holmes?
So for language changes that we just did, it's, it's a little bit easier to, to do by a special act. But this is so specific to term of office. This is not the appropriate process to take to do this. So the special act can be used if language needs to be updated or there's something that's not making sense in terms of that. But for a process as large as this, this is not, we're not the right, I do not believe we are the right body to be, to be approving this. Does, does that help clarify?
I understand.
Thank you. Council Holmes, thank you for the way you've ushered this through. Thank you for providing us, uh, Section 10. I agree. I think that this isn't about term limits. I think this is about the procedure in which we're, we're looking at this. And perhaps maybe what will come out of this is, maybe there is a need for a charter commission[1781.94] at time to take a look in review. It's been a while. Things have changed. But I mean, for something like this, something that really changes how this body in this city operates, that's something that the voters seriously deserve a vote to have, to have their voice heard. I think that -- I think that concludes my comments at this point.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Jackson.
Thank you. When we first received this, I thought it was -- I don't even know how to describe it. But it's not up to us. It's not up to the mayor of the city to be writing new legislation. That's up to our state representatives, our state senators. That's what they're there for. So, if you want to write new legislation, then do it as a state rep or a state senator, but not as a mayor and not as a city counselor. So, I am going to vote against this tonight.
Thank you. Any other?
I'm gonna be really brief. I go along with what Kate's saying, but I think it says it clearly right here, quite frankly, that only a charter commission elected under this chapter may propose any change in a charter relating in any way to the composition, mode of election, or appointment, or terms of office of the legislative body, the mayor or city manager, or the Board of Selectment or Town Manager. How much more clear can this be? We have no right. The mayor has no right. If you want to have this done, elect a charter commission. Pure and simple. That's it. End of story.
Period. The end.
The end.
Like I said. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Again, this requires a roll call vote, and I believe we'll begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
No.
Ms. Reynolds.
No.
Ms. Dolan.
No.
Mr. Delicio.
No.
Vice President Pariqa.
No.
Mr. Conti.
No.
Mr. Waterman.
No.
Ms. Jackson.
No.
President Cooper.
No.
Zero yeas, nine nays.
Motion fails.
From the docket of January 15th, 2019, I move to adopt Mass. General Law Chapter 40, Section 8J, as it pertains to changing the Attleboro Disability Committee to the Attleboro Disability Commission and all that it entails.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. I noticed that this motion doesn't have the date that this would be in effect, but it has been suggested. I don't know if I would add it to the motion.
Oh, we can make a motion.
You can make a motion to a friendly amendment to add the -- this will take effect in fiscal year, whatever was suggested to you.
Okay. So, it would be -- would that be fiscal year 20?
This shall take effect.
This shall take effect fiscal year 2020. And I did speak to not only the administration.
So, let's get the second on the initial, and then you proposing an amendment will get a -- that's sort of a bigger one than a friendly amendment.
Second.
Second.
To the amendment? Second to the amendment?
Yes.
So, let's discuss the amendment, and then we can go to the motion as amended.
I spoke to the chair of the Disability Committee. She was very excited, and I explained that why this would be an easier timeframe and was supportive of that, and also to the administration who suggested it. So, it seemed like everybody was in agreement with that.
Great. Any other questions or comments about the amendment to make it -- this shall take effect fiscal year 2020? Hearing none. That will require a roll call vote, Steve, I believe. And we'll begin with Counselor Jackson.
Yeah. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Pariqa.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Now, the motion as amended.
I spoke in committee last week. This is really exciting for the city, and I'm happy to support this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Just that I think that this will really help our city move forward in how we serve disabled people.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds.
I guess I would only say that, first, I didn't really understand why it would be a big change, but when you start to look more into it, and it's about the grants and the money that they can bring into their own, because it changes to a commission versus a committee, which I don't think we were really aware of. So, to me, that is really the reason we're doing this, is to allow them to bring in dollars that can be used for them to do some of the things that the city can't provide at this time.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Pariqa.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Second, this is for ordinance elections and legislative matters. I will call tonight. And then I'm also reporting on zoning and land use committee for Council Colvis. From the docket -- there's 40 motions. From the docket of November 20, 2018, the following votes pertain to Leonard J. Irving Center, Inc., request for special permit number one to operate a marijuana business, marijuana treatment center at 70 Frank Mossberg. I move that the municipal council find that standard one of Section 17-9.4A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use is allowed under Section 17-3.4 Table of Use Regulations, Community Facilities 11C, as a special permitted use in the district for which the application is made.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Counselor Colvis asked for conversation to take place during committee last week. I hope I can answer questions if anyone has any, but I do think that this has been a pretty thorough process. The public hearing was open for quite some time, and it seems like the council has some opportunity to get their questions answered.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counselor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard two of Section 17-9.4A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not cause any undue traffic congestion or impaired pedestrian safety.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any comments? Roll -- any comments from the council? The roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard three of Section 17-9.4A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not overload any municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazardous affecting health, safety, or general welfare.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counselor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President -- oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard four of Section 17-9.4A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not have a severe undesirable effect on the neighborhood, park, public, and environment that would be lessened significantly by denying or modifying the requested permit.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none. A roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard five of Section 17-9.4A standards for granting permit is satisfied as application pursuant to the provision of Section 17-10 special regulations has been filed.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. A roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counselor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that the standard six of Section 17-9.4A standards for granting permit is not applicable to this application.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Counselor Jack.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that in accordance with Section 17-10.15 marijuana business use of the zoning ordinance that the use complies with the applicable provisions set forth herein within the underlying district in which the land is located.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move to approve the application for the special permit number one pursuant to Section 17-10.15 marijuana business use of the revised zoning ordinances of the Leonard J. Irving Center Incorporated, 81 West Street, Attleboro, Mass., operate a marijuana treatment center at 70 Frank Mossberg Drive. Said premises being assessed as plat number 147 lot 5F with an area of 1.1434 acres located in industrial zoning district with conditions.
Second.
So.
Oops.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry, it's just not here on the --
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Counselor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
From the docket of November 20th, 2018, the following votes pertain to Ashley's Extracts, Extracts, Inc., request for a special permit number two to operate a marijuana business, marijuana product manufacturer at 76 Frank Mossberg. I move that the municipal council find that standard one of Section 17-9.4A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use is allowed under Section 17-3.4 Table of Use Regulations, Community Facilities 11C, as a special permitted use in the district for which the application is made.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Any questions or comments?
We discussed all this for this business last week.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. This requires a roll call vote, and we'll begin with Counselor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Pariqa.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard two of Section 17-9.4A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not cause undue traffic congestion or impaired pedestrian safety.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. A roll call vote is required, and we'll begin with Counselor Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Pariqa.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson. Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard three of Section seventeen dash nine point four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not overload any municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Any questions or comments? Thank you, this requires a roll call vote and the vote will begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
He's.
Mr. Conti.
The way.
Yes. Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
I forgot my.
I'm sorry, Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard four of Section seventeen dash point seventeen nine point four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not have a severe undesirable effect on the neighborhood, public, and environment that would be lessened significantly by denying or modifying the requested permit.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, questions or comments? Hearing none, a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard five of Section seventeen dash nine point four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the application pursuant to the provisions of Section seventeen dash ten special regulations has been filed.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments? A roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard six of Section seventeen dash nine point four A standards for granting permit is not applicable to this application.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that in accordance with Section seventeen dash ten point one five marijuana business use of the zoning ordinance that the use complies with the applicable provisions set forth herein and with the underlying district in which the land is located.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments? Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
Counsel Cooper, can I read the next one? Is it all right for me even though I'm not on that committee? I'll take it. Take it for you. I move to approve the application for a special permit number two pursuant to Section seventeen dash ten dot fifteen marijuana business use of the revised zoning ordinance from the Ashley's Extracts, Inc., eighty-one West Street, Attleboro, Mass., to operate a marijuana product manufacturer at seventy-six Frank Mossberg Drive. Said premises being assessed as plat number one forty-five, portion of lot number one, with an area of six point two eight four two acres located in an industrial zoning district with conditions.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
No, oh, yes.
Uh, Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of November twentieth, twenty eighteen, the following votes pertain to Ashley's, Inc., request for a special permit to operate a marijuana business, marijuana retail sales facility at seventy Frank Mossberg. I move that the municipal council find that standard one of Section seventeen dash nine point four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use is allowed under Section seventeen dash three point four Table of Use Regulations, Community Facilities eleven C, as a special permitted use in the district for which the application is made.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, Counsel Jackson requires a roll call vote and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
I move that the municipal council find that standard two of Section seventeen dash nine point four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not cause undue traffic congestion or impaired pedestrian safety.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard three of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not overload any municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard four of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not have a severe undesirable effect on the neighborhood, public, and environment that would be lessened significantly by denying or modifying the requested permit.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments? Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard five of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the application pursuant to the provisions of Section seventeen dash ten special regulations has been filed.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard six of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is not applicable to this application.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that in accordance with Section seventeen dash ten dot fifteen marijuana business use of the zoning ordinance that the use complies with the applicable provisions set forth herein and with the underlying district in which the land is located.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move to approve the application for a special permit number three pursuant to Section seventeen dash ten dot fifteen marijuana business use of the revised zoning ordinances from the Ashley's, Inc., eighty-one West Street, Attleboro, Mass., to operate a marijuana retail sales facility at seventy Frank Mossberg Drive.[686.82][686.82]684.211.1421 Said premises being assessed as plat number one forty-seven, portion of lot number five F with an area of one point one four three four acres located in an industrial zoning district with conditions.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and we'll require a roll call vote, we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of November twentieth, twenty eighteen, the following votes pertain to Ashley's Farm, Inc., request for a special permit number four to operate a marijuana business, marijuana cultivator center at seventy-six Frank Mossberg.[720.82][720.82]684.211.1421 I move that the municipal council find that standard one of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use is allowed under Section seventeen dash three dot four Table of Use Regulations, Community Facilities eleven C, as a special permitted use in the district for which the application is made.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions?
No.
Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote, we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard two of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not overload any municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard two of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not cause undue traffic congestion or impaired pedestrian safety.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions?
No.
Thank you, a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
I move that the municipal council find that standard three of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not overload any municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard four of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not have a severe undesirable effect on the neighborhood, public, and environment that would be lessened significantly by denying or modifying the requested permit.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
I move that the municipal council find that standard five of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the application pursuant to the provisions of Section seventeen dash ten special regulations has been filed.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
President Cooper.
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
I move that the municipal council find that standard five of Section seventeen dash nine dot four A standards for granting permit is satisfied as the application pursuant to the provisions of Section seventeen dash ten special regulations has been filed.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and we'll have a roll call vote beginning with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Mr. Waterman.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Vice President Perica.
Yes.
Mr. Delicio.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds.
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard six of section seventeen dash nine dot four A, standards for granting permit is not applicable to this application.
I said second.
Thank you.
Sorry. It wasn't loud.
Thank you, motion is in order and a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that in accordance with section seventeen dash ten dot fifteen, marijuana business use of the zoning ordinance, that this use complies with the applicable provisions set forth herein and with the underlying district in which the land is located.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counselor Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move to approve the application for a special permit number four pursuant to section seventeen dash ten dot fifteen, marijuana business use of the revised zoning ordinances from the Ashley's Farm Inc., eighty-one West Street, Atterboro, to operate a marijuana cultivator center at seventy-six Frank Mossberg Drive. Said premises being a cessers plat number one forty-five, portion of lot number one with an area of six point two eight four two acres located in an industrial zoning district with conditions.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and requires a roll call vote that will begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the docket of November twentieth, twenty eighteen, the following votes pertain to the Leonard J. Irving Center Inc., request for a special permit number five to operate a marijuana business medical marijuana treatment center at seventy-six Frank Mossberg. I move that the municipal council find that standard one of section seventeen dash nine dot four A, standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use is allowed under section seventeen dash three point four, Table of Use Regulations, Community Facilities, eleven C, as a special permitted use in the district for which the application is made.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order and a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
With who, I'm sorry?
Counsel Jackson, I think.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard two of section seventeen dash nine dot four A, standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not cause undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard three of section seventeen dash nine dot four A, standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not overload any municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard four of section seventeen dash nine dot four A, standards for granting permit is satisfied as the requested use will not have a severe undesirable effect on the neighborhood, public, and environment that would be lessened significantly by denying or modifying the requested permit.
Second.
Thank you, motion is in order. A roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that standard five of section seventeen dash nine dot four A, standards for granting permit is satisfied as application pursuant to the provisions of section seventeen dash ten, special regulations has been filed.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and requires a roll call vote beginning with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
I move that the municipal council find that standard six of section seventeen dash nine dot four A, standards for granting permit is not applicable to this application.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
I move that the municipal council find that in accordance with section seventeen dash ten dot fifteen, marijuana business use of the zoning ordinance, that the use complies with the applicable provisions set forth herein and with the underlying district in which the land is located.
Second.
Motion is in order and a roll call vote is required and we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
And last but not least, I move to approve the application for a special permit number five pursuant to section seventeen dash ten dot fifteen marijuana business use of the revised zoning ordinances from the Leonard J. Irving Center Inc. of eighty-one West Street, Atterboro, to operate a medical marijuana treatment center at seventy-six Frank Mossberg Drive. Said premises being a cessers plat number one forty-five, portion of lot number one with an area of six point two eight four two acres located in an industrial zoning district with conditions.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order and requires a roll call vote that will begin with Counsel Jackson.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
That concludes the business for zoning and land use committee and I just really want to thank Counsel Delicio and Counsel Reynolds for helping me with that, I was a little bit haunted by forty motions this evening, so I really do appreciate that.
You did a beautiful job. Thank you.
I'm sure record, Counsel Collins says he's thrilled to be here today.
Just gonna go backwards slightly to capital improvements. Virginia let us know that we need ten days to advertise, so three twelve isn't gonna work. So, we could do in the nineteenth?
Three nineteen.
If you wanna...
Make a motion to amend prior vote of the council?
Wait a minute.
Make a motion to amend?
A point of order?
Yeah.
It may be easier being that that has already passed to take that up under old, at a different time? Or...
Let's come back to it under old business.
Okay.
Record and we'll get rid of the three twelve and we'll make a motion to do three nineteen. Sound good?
He would have to call for that tonight and then old business vote the other part, reverse the vote on the other one and vote that down, because he wouldn't be able, wouldn't have enough time if we came back next week on the twelfth. We still are on...
Right, we need ten days.
We need the ten days.
So, in order to do it, it would need to be on the three nineteen, whatever the date she wrote here, yeah. Counsel Jackson?
I do believe that he can actually call his committee meeting back to order because we have not concluded this evening.
Right.
So, he could actually do that now and then I can, I don't know who, I can't remember who seconded with all these seconds tonight, but we could just withdraw it. I believe that you can do that.
I believe you can go back to the committee, we haven't concluded the committee reports yet.
Yes.
It's not like a committee meeting where you called it to order and then you ended. So, go back to Counsel Conti, it was seconded at the, by, the original motion for three twelve was seconded by Counsel Pricke, according to, I know, is that what you have?
Yes, sir.
So...
So, he needs to call his committee meeting back to order?
So, I would like to call the Capital Improvement City Development Committee back to order. No, you're reporting for, you're reporting again for Capital Improvements and City Development?
Reporting again for the Capital Improvements City Development Committee that due to recent developments of the legal requirements for the advertising of the public hearing on the capital improvement plan, that we will not be able to have a public hearing on December, on March twelfth, but rather schedule the public hearing for March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Thank you. Motions in order, any questions or comments? Hearing none, this requires a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
More, motion passes. We are scheduled now for three nineteen, which will give us the ten days. Thank you. Let me just get my stuff back in order here. Counselor Delicio?
Thank you, reporting for Public Safety and Emergency Management from the docket of March fifth, two thousand nineteen, I move to approve the request of the matter to appropriate ten thousand dollars from fire vehicle maintenance and ten thousand to account fire major vehicle repairs from account undesigned fund balance, free cash, general government regarding the need to provide funding to the fire department vehicle maintenance, the vehicle ma, major vehicle repair accounts to maintain the fire department apparatus for the rest of the fiscal year.
Second.
Thank you, motions in order, any questions or comments?
None, this was discussed last weekend in committee.
Great. This requires a roll call vote, we'll begin with Counsel Holmes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Delicio?
Yes.
Vice President Pricke?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
President Cooper?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, motion passes.
From the business for Public Safety and Emergency Management, would like to call for a meeting next week at the appropriate time.
Thank you. There is no old business, there are some items of new business that I'll recognize, Vice President Pricke.
Thank you, President Cooper. There are four pieces of new business this evening. The first one, please refer to the following, please refer the following new business to the appropriate committee for, committee or department for study and recommendation. That the property formerly known as Highland Country Club, the property, be permanently assigned to a city department under the supervision of that department superintendent. Our recommendation is for the property to be under the supervision of the superintendent of parks. It was sponsored by myself, authored by Todd Cobus, and co-sponsored by the entire council.
Second.
Thank you. Just find my, okay. Motions in order, any questions or comments?
Yes, I think that I'll make some comments now that'll be reflective of all three motions. After having a brief discuss, so two weeks ago, there was a communication that came down saying we've changed the name of Highland Country Club to Highland Park. There's some discussion about that, we did get an opinion from the city solicitor that there is, there has been a past pattern where that has taken place where we would bring a name change like that down to the municipal council for approval. Kind of shows connectivity between the administration and the municipal council. When, when you look in the bond book, you do notice that the bond was taken out for the city, so it's not just under one individual's domain. For months, I have had many conversations with the administration about, we've owned the property now for a little over six months. We need to have a department head who's in charge of this particular piece of property. If we receive concerns or questions from constituents, we need to know someone to speak to with regards to that. And in general, it's pretty important for us, like every other park or recreational facility, there is a department head who's in charge of that. So, it's important to have this. As we move down, as I said, there are other different pieces of business. It's also important, you know, we talked earlier tonight, I know that Kate made some comments with regards to this, when we were purchasing Highland Country Club, we all spoke about the potential cost, the general upkeep costs, maintenance, changing locks, fixing doors, repairing roofs, things like that. The purchase for Highland Country Club came, you know, a few months after we approved the budget. And so, now any of those expenses that the departments that have been involved down there, whether it was the building, the building department who had to get a thirty-yard dumpster to clean out all of the garbage that was left behind in the main building, whether it's the park department where they're changing locks and installing lights